To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we need to make an amendment to it under Citizens Business and Writing, number two, open container liquor permit for cap and bottle?
Anyone who needs to be accepted under the agenda?
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Approval of the minutes for the regular meeting and executive session from Monday, March 6, 2023.
I hope we accept the amendment to those two meetings.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Nomination for recognition. We do have the Newcastle Girls Basketball Team for third place at state tournament. Is there any other? Certificates of recognition. Is Kaya Miller here? Well, we have Kaya Miller for placing first in the first girls ever Wyoming State Wrestling. So we'll get, make sure we get this certificate out to her. And then we have another certificate for Haven. Haven took second place in the 106-pound state wrestling. Congratulations. Now Haven is actually an Upton student that wrestles up in Newcastle together. Is that correct?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you. You done us proud.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Nothing for Citizens Business verbal? And he, oh, I'm sorry. Citizens Business and Writing, number one is Modern Electric Request for Electrical License. The following requested an electrical license. All fees have been paid. Copies of their license and proof of insurance and bond have been provided for 2023. Paid $150. Check number 121193. Contractor is Modern Electric. Masculine Electrician, Richard Pagnarli. Burning Man Electrician, Nate Peterson. Do we need to accept this request for license?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Citizens Business and Writing, number two. We got a written request via email for last-minute liquor license, open container, for cap and bottle for the 25th at 9:00 a.m. to the 26th, 9:00 a.m. at the Senior Center. This would be only approved if motion is made and pending all required paperwork and fees. Because at this time it is not.
What's the amendment?
It is for Nancy Blair. It's a fundraiser. She is dealing with... She's been diagnosed with bone cancer. So there's a fundraiser for her on the 25th at the Senior Center.
I move that we accept the open container permit for the cap and bottle from 9:00 a.m. on the 25th to 9:00 a.m. on the 26th. Second.
Do we need to put it pending all paperwork?
Pending all paperwork, can these are paid? Excuse me.
Do we have a motion in second? Any further discussion?
I have a question. When it's at the Senior Center, is there a reason why it's an open container and not a normal 24-hour one?
Well, I didn't have any paperwork by asking at 6:42.
An open container, it's kind of being out on the street somewhere. It's not typically. And when it's in an event like that, it's usually just like a malt beverage, 24-hour license, so.
You're correct.
I'm in the motion.
I'm in my second.
Are, is it gonna spill out into the parking lot? I mean, is that why they're...
I'm not sure.
It's kind of a spur of the moment request, right?
It's the 25th?
Yeah.
I don't know if they'd be outside, would they?
Just depends on how many people are there. They might be standing outside. I'm not sure.
That's just the wires crossed.
Did they ask for open container or are you just saying that? I got, I know this is short notice, but was wondering if you could approve the cap and bottle for a permit for Nancy Blair's benefit on Saturday night, the 25th, at the Senior Center. I think they just happened to say that.
So I am in my motion for a malt beverage, 24-hour permit for the cap and bottle spanning from the 25th at 9:00 a.m. to the 26th at 9:00 a.m., dependent on whether fees are paid and paperwork is submitted.
Okay.
All right. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question now. What if they wanted serve spirits and mixed drinks? It's a fundraiser, right? He said malt beverage. That's beer. So we're gonna waste the malt then?
It's for malt.
Okay, all right.
Any other discussion?
I just hope that this lady can generate some revenue through this permit to help her with her expenses.
No kidding.
I know they got some great segments and stuff.
It's good.
All in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion pending paperwork and fees. Any Citizens Business verbal?
I'm not on the agenda. It's Fox.
Absolutely.
Come on up there.
Sure. Just let us, let everybody know who you are. I know who you are.
Councilman, my name is Amy Packard. I'm with the Newcastle Ice Association. I wanted to come in here as our season just ended and just say thank you to you guys for the support that you guys have given us for this year and the last couple of years. It's been a good season all around. So thank you very much. Part of me coming here today was kind of give you an idea, especially the city, you've been up there helping out with pipes and everything and all that. And I really, really, truly appreciate that. Part of what I wanted to do today is to kind of give you a plan now that we're closed of what to expect. We've had colder weather, so obviously the ice is not melting as quick as we had hoped. So I'm guessing that we're gonna be about another month before we're totally out of the park over there. So just kind of give you that. We'll still do our due diligence and make sure our liner's not floating away like it did the first year or anything like that. So, but we'll do our best to get that cleaned up and out of the way so that the rest of the citizens can get back to using the ski park the way they could. So just wanted to come in here and say thank you and let you know. That was it.
Thank you guys. The community loves it.
Can you tell us a little bit about the season? Who used it? What all happened up there?
Well, you know, in general, it was a pretty damn good season. So we actually started out just on New Year's or Christmas Eve is when we opened. And we had, probably only had about a dozen people that day. It was great year for ice in general where we were able to build it and maintain it with really little effort all the way around. But I would say each weekend, we probably had, I don't know, close to 20 to 30 people total over the weekend, each weekend that we were open and able to use it. It kind of came through, you know, anywhere from new skaters and experienced skaters. A lot of what we get are people that come and they'll buy a season pass to come use our rentals. And they came over and gosh, they're there every weekend. And so there's that. Wednesdays and Saturdays, we were running, we call it stick and puck pickup games for hockey essentially. We had on average about 10 people on Wednesdays and probably a little less on the weekends for that one. But it was kids of any age group. And we had, we had one kid that was there, started skating for the first time last year and has been there for all the skate and puck sessions and everything, learning how to play hockey every week since then and become quite a good skater. So that's pretty awesome. Yeah. It is. So this year was our first year with the Learn to Skate program, which the bank helped sponsor us. And that was actually, we have an instructor that is a certified instructor who learned to skate. And so we had four students that actually participated in that program and got their, I don't want to speak on the instructors thing because I'm not 100% familiar with it, but it's essentially an award to say you passed the season. Now they're good skaters. So all in all, that's what it was. I mean, it wasn't... I feel like we had a great turnout this year, so to speak. So, sorry, I'm not the greatest public speaker here yet.
You're doing fine. You're doing fine. You're doing fine.
There's a lot of volunteers that day.
We did. Yeah, yeah. And so one of the things that I've always talked about is there's primarily four of us and we actually had a really good turnout of people just randomly come by and help clear the ice with snow and do anything like that. But the four primary volunteers, the ones that are out there passing out the skate rentals and things like that, we were only able to operate, it was probably six to seven hours total per week on the weekends because it was about four hours a week. And so our goals coming into next year are going to be to increase our, help to be able to do that, offer it more frequently throughout the weekend and longer hours on the weekends, kind of go through that. But yeah, overall, every year we've been able to improve and get better at what we're doing. And we get a few extra people out there learning to skate and it's, yeah, a really good response from the entire community. So we hope to keep this going.
Thank you very much.
Yep. So that's it. Thank you, guys.
We do have a public hearing scheduled for 7:30, but we keep running on. So just keep in mind, if it's 7:30, I may have to interrupt to go back to that public hearing. Any mayor or council member reports? Any old business?
I have so many other business there. I was contacted by Stephen Ludwig. He just wanted to call and he wanted it to be made public record that he is not in support of the Chapter 56 permit. He doesn't want to see the deer in town killed. We had a nice conversation and he, he said although he wasn't in favor, that he felt like the council had done their due diligence and tried to explore more options, but he just isn't in favor of seeing animals killed. And he was also on the council prior and he didn't want to see the cats killed in town either. So he's just a lover of life and doesn't want to see the animals harmed. And I told him that I would inform the council of his opposition.
Any other old business? Department head reports. Luke Peoples is away at trainings. We have Sergeant Thompson.
So I was giving this just a minute ago. Excuse me. I'm a little raspy this evening, but I'll muddle my way through the calls for service that we received. I think I understand how this works. So months to date, to the 18th of March, the Weston County Sheriff's Office, we have fielded 67 calls for them. Newcastle Police Department, we fielded 85 calls. Upton Police Department, 25 calls. Newcastle Ambulance Service, 15 calls. Upton Ambulance, two calls. Newcastle Volunteer Fire Department, one call. Upton Volunteer Fire Department, one call. And Weston County Fire Protection District, 10 calls. For a month to date, total of 206. And I don't know what other information he typically gives as far as calls for service, but that's, that's the calls I have for months to date. And the other business we have, we have two prospective candidates for police officer that we would like to give conditional offers to. One gentleman is named Nick Kaminsky. He has eight years of prior service. He's a certified firearms instructor, certified armor. And we would like to give him a conditional offer of $24 an hour with a one-year probationary period. And that's pending the completion of a background check and physical. He does not have to do the other requirements of a peace officer because he's been employed within the last year as a peace officer. So there's something we don't have to do with him. And then Jake Esposito, we have most of this stuff done for him. Again, we would start him at the starting pay of $21 and some change an hour. I can't remember about the exact number. It's a one-year probationary period. And he will be enrolled in the academy May 1st, pending approval. And then we would also like to request that we can start advertising for a records position. We are looking at hiring a records clerk to handle some of the day-to-day business within the department and help us get back up off the ground and running. So that's, that's the items that Chief Bowles wanted me to bring to the attention of the council.
Thank you. Do we have a motion from the council?
No, I have moved it was for Chief Bowles and Sergeant with hiring Nick Kaminsky at $24 an hour with one-year probation. And Jake Esposito. Jake? Jake? Esmo what?
Esposito.
Yeah, okay. $21 and preparing to go to the academy. And I don't know about the girl, so I'm not gonna put that in.
Pending completion.
Background and physical.
We don't need the probationary period for Kaminsky though, correct?
No, they all have them.
Yeah, everybody does the probationary.
We don't need the probationary period for Kaminsky though, correct?
No, they all have them.
Yeah, everybody does the probationary.
Yeah, that's what I meant by the one-year.
But we don't have the exact amount for Jake, correct?
No, I, I meant to ask Stacy before we got started, is it 2107? And I don't have to start.
I believe it is.
Okay.
Whatever the starting is, then that's part of my motion. Should we put in there, we can hire as records person at a reasonable rate?
Well, the record, they just want to advertise for him.
Okay. So I'll put it in there at a reasonable rate and then you can make the decision.
Actually, the council's fine with you advertising for a records position. So we have a motion. We have a second.
Oh, you second?
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And do you need help filling out all the requirements for an ad for the records position? I think they started one. I think they started one. Here with Melissa.
Okay.
Yeah, I think she may have one.
Okay.
Because I know that we approved that position already. Anything else?
Sergeant, did you get all moved?
About, we got most of the big stuff moved. We need to move our computers and things like that once the server is up and running. We don't have that up yet as far as I know. So as soon as that's up, then we'll be able to move the rest of our infrastructure over there. Should be up and going pretty quickly.
We're all looking forward to the grand opening party.
Was the athletic students involved?
Yes, they made.
So we need to make sure.
They made quick work of it, so.
We need to make sure we have a motion. All right, thank you. Any other questions? Do we, excuse me, do we want to give them a recognition, a one-way pay or not? Or is this just business? Any other questions? City Attorney Doubling here.
Madam Mayor, I have nothing to report.
Any questions for City Attorney?
Not until we get to the, oh, the recession.
City Clerk Preacher Stacy.
I put a ad for the city administrator in your packet of things. The newsletter journal set that up, kind of trying to pick some of the main topics out of the job description. I'm just gonna have them start that. Just see if there weren't any other changes that anybody would like to make to that.
I think that's a administrator, you know, what we're kind of calling that position.
In some of our discussions, we had said that we wanted to emphasize on the grant wagon. Work through the grants and funding. Okay, I see that. I'm sorry.
And then, of course, the full job description will be available too, if they request an application. I don't have anything else other than that.
I think it's great.
Yeah, I think it looks good to you, Stacy.
Go on. Let's get this going.
I'll let them know tomorrow.
Any other questions for our super? Moving on to Public Works Supervisor, Greg Stone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, we interviewed a young man, Zachary Lane. We would like to hire him probationary at $17 an hour. He has, we went through all of his references, drug screens and all that, all done, so.
When is it for your probation?
Your probation.
Date to start?
Tomorrow.
And how much was it?
Seventeen.
I move that we hire Zachary Lane for the full-time probation with one-year probation and $17 an hour, starting March 21st. At 7:00 a.m.
Well, we might get until eight.
We have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Next item, I add that Justin King has passed his backflow sender tester in Rickers certification. It's one of the things we do. We have backflow renters all over town. They have to have some inspection of the land and testing. Like to ask 50 cent raise for completion of that course.
Is that as of tomorrow or as of today?
Uh, tomorrow. Justin King.
Oh, Justin.
Justin.
I move that we give Justin King a 50 cent an hour raise for completing the backflow preventer faster course, starting March 21st. A second.
We have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Another item, Highway 16 bike path project. We have some preliminary plans done. Next step is to have a stakeholders meeting. We'll be setting that up in the next couple of weeks. I just need a time and date. We want to do that. So people have a, can speak up, have public voice on that. Met with Craig McCollum with Long Beach Q about landfill two closure. There's a couple, three things I'd like to discuss with the sanitation committee if we can set up a meeting sometime in the next couple of weeks, if the sanitation committee was up for that. I can send out some dates. I gotta talk to Craig again to see if he's available.
You want to just email?
Yeah, I'll email everybody once I find out. Great schedule. Other than that, any, oh, one other thing I found out this morning, the water master plan, the bill for the water master plan, the governor signed, so that we moved forward. Unless people have questions, unless anybody has any questions?
Thank you. Any further questions for Supervisor, Greg Stone?
I just, I noticed there's always some hybrids are leaking. What are we doing? I haven't, a whole bunch.
Well, that's why we're hiring another guy. Trying to get him to be fully staffed. So if I might get him to him here shortly, run the tail end of a couple bigger projects we've been working on. So hopefully it'll warm up for you too. That always helps.
Any other questions for moving understanding committee reports? Is there any other business?
One, just to the follow-up with Ed Kiesling that was in a few meetings ago. I drove around the railroad and Mystic area to kind of look things over and he was trying to explain to us. And I could only find one pothole. And I drove around it probably three times trying to find this huge pothole he was talking about. And it's right when you get off of the drainage into the corner of Pine and coming off of railroad. And it wasn't as big as some of the other ones in town, but that might be one that when you're doing potholes, the summer, the patch. The two lights that he was talking about that were out were right on the alley in that area. And the other one is on the fence, you know, where he's talking where that is a blind corner. Most of that is his fence line and the growth that's on his fence line, the vine and everything. So I know that there's some stuff in the ordinance about wrong ways and that being hidden by fence line. So if you wanted to really push that So if you wanted to really push that one, that might not be in his favor. Having to take parts of that down to be able to dig some steel around that corner for a blind corner. But other than that, I really didn't see a lot of stuff off the Birch, Mystic, and Pine area when I drove. And I'd probably went through there three times just trying to find what he was talking about.
Well, I did also on top of that, I did email Black Hills Energy, and maybe there you can help us out, have night officers kind of jot down which streets lights are out on the wooden poles.
Met with, we actually did that. Two guys when they were cleaning sidewalks because there was no snow, we drove around and, or they drove around and collected some pteruses. They collected 22 streetlights out.
If I can get that, because they asked me for that.
Yeah. And Captain Stevenson, we've cut ice twice this winter already at Mystic and Pine and Birch area because that is a notorious area for icing up. Last year, they spent three days on Birch and Mystic with the Durapatcher. We're planning on doing more again this year. The Durapatcher is rented for May. I went ahead and rented it. We're kind of working out some details on purchasing the one we were looking at. So yes, we will, if we're getting that back here in May.
We have to stop conversation. It is 7:30, and we do have a public hearing schedule petition for annexation filed by Jesse Kennedy. Is that fair?
Yes. Again, Jesse W. Candidate filed a petition for annexation. It's on the southeast, southeast quarter, southeast quarter, section 19, Route 45 North, range 61 West, for a six-point full break-in. There's 7.76 acres that she wanted to annex into the town. She's complied with all the paperwork according to the statute, state statute. And I think you guys have all the packets with all the info in it. She does apologize, she's from Texas. She would want to have to fly back up here.
And that's, they go through planning and zoning?
It doesn't have to have a plan at all. It's gotten regret for location of water and sewer lines.
And that was one thing, you know, looking through all the paperwork and then looking at the, at the Google Maps and everything, just to be sure anywhere else was at. I know this one was brought up a few years ago and might have brought it to us and had concern about water and sewer runs. It's going to be almost too far for them to run a sewer. But, you know, looking at the map you had here, depending on where you're going out, what the location of the property, you know, for the building, is there issues with them being able to tie onto the sewer that's to the east, the southeast of the property?
Actually, I think Greg thinks. That's right, Captain Stevenson. The corner of the edge of her property is 237 feet away from the coast of Surmaine. City ordinance is specified, and if they're within 300 feet of Surmaine, they are required to tie on to Surmaine. The sewer line will have to travel through a utility easement, but it's, that's what it's intended for and what it's used for. Water, we're not exactly sure how far up Robie it goes. The map that Jesse Candidate produced of the trailer board shows it going right up to the edge of the property. So as far as the actual point where the end of it is, we're not sure exactly, but it does travel up close to the property enough to do a three-quarter inch tab.
Yeah, I read in the descriptions piece in there, they were looking at the water line that was off of Christiansen Street, I believe, to be able to tie off the one on Christiansen. Is that correct?
I, we did talk about that with her, I did. I said she would have to secure a easement across other people's properties if she was ever.
So Greg, at the time when I was with Mike, I actually went and saw it. He was talking about there only being one way for her to tie into actually the city water system. And it was actually through someone else's property. I think there's a trailer park there or something like that. I think she already has an easement there, but it's not a utility easement. You say that there's another access now for tying it in?
The water?
Yeah.
Yes, right off of Robie, right off the end of Robie.
Okay. So that's really confusing because he was very, let's say, not adamant about doing this and the way that he framed it, it seemed like it was definitely not a possibility, so.
Reviewing the county's plat, their map viewer system, the maps that we have are as built as well as, one other thing I might have left out, she should be able to go straight into without, she'd be the road right away of Robie Street, from what I understand.
Yes, I just kind of pulled it down to whatever my understanding of time.
Right at the end of Robie. And then there's kind of a roadway between the trailer court, because it was in between both sides at least or less than that. So there's a right away between here to get to that property.
She has a pass that's recent in, obviously, but. God, he made it sound like it was absolutely.
I know he mentioned something about they would have to tie on to the fire hydrant or something that was in that roadway. But I remember something to that reflection of tying on to the fire hydrant. And there weren't two of those, but.
It may, kind of small, but on our portion of the road right away comes right up to me. That room line is.
That's right there.
Yeah. That's the information.
I think he was talking about in here or back here was where we're going to have to tie in, but.
Well, he assumed line only came up here. They had shown maps to come through. So comes up first.
Well, so, I mean, other than having to give them a cap and then tap our sewers, there's really no, no problem with them timing.
No, I didn't expect that.
It's got a lot of rough times doing this deal, you guys.
It looks like it was a lot of work.
So we're not ready to give them a cap.
No, I was going to say, let's just give them.
No, no, we're not ready to give a cap, so we already misspoke, but I'm. Yeah, I mean, it seems like it's easy. It seemed like a no-brainer to me that they should be able to annex it and increase our tax base and add to our enterprise account. I moved that we approve the annexation request here.
What handout? I'm Mary Ann Young. I live on the corner of Christiansen and the Barker Street. And we've had a lot of problems before we ever moved there. The house next to us had a basement that flooded all the time, and the city dug this huge ditch to remove my property down there. And one time, Stan Dix and I walked up to the top of that hill, and people have changed who live there now. And there's a big dam up in there. And I don't know if that's on that property. I'm not familiar where the boundaries are going to be where you go. But there's a dam up there that's sort of held together with old cars, and that water is in there. And that's what comes down, and it drains down to my ditch when it's a wet year. And I just want to make you folks aware of what's up there. And I, like I said, I don't know where those boundaries are, but there's water there that if it ever really got out of control, you're going to have a big drainage problem up there. And my question is also, does this mean that the traffic, if she's going to put in a driveway, is the traffic going to be on Robie Road and not on Christiansen Road?
She was, I believe she was intending to use Robie as her access.
We would be happy about that because we have more than enough dusty traffic on the roads. We got nuts. But I want to make you folks aware of this dam that's up there. It's been up there for a long time, and it's sort of a pretty area, but it's water. It's up on the top of the hill, so.
It's a good thing it's the county commissioner's city right there. We think it's his problem.
Well, it probably is, I can't be 20 seconds. Did you know that, Greg?
Do you know whose property it is?
Come walk up, I'll throw you sometime.
Whose property is that?
I don't know.
I moved the, approve the petition for annexation from Jesse W. Candidate.
I'm looking at sometime.
A second.
Do you have a motion in second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Did you have?
We done aye'd it. I just had a question for them. Is there any way this could get us in any kind of trouble? Any kind of vulnerability for the city here?
In terms of annexing and her property?
Yeah.
Not that I can think of off the top of my head.
Okay, just.
We have.
I also get a motion for Dublin Hughes to prepare the ordinance for the annexation.
I moved that we ask Dublin Hughes to prepare the motion for annexation.
Ordinance.
The ordinance for annexation, excuse me.
You have a motion in second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Better late than never, right?
Yeah, I was at the weight room and I totally forgot.
Well, that's okay, that's what makes you a state champion.
That's right.
So Kaya Muller's here, like I said earlier, she's our first female state champion in wrestling. It's always late. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And also, she is a intern at our police department. Future police officer?
Park ranger, well, unfortunately.
Ah, park ranger. Well, well, congratulations. Thank you, congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
We have parks in the city.
Well, I'll be back, guys. Next time.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Have a good night. You too. Any other business? Claims against the city dated March 20th, 2023.
And there is motion, we pay the claims being March 20th, 2023.
Second.
Do you have a motion in second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Do you have a motion in second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.